Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Penfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, also online at PenfieldTV.org, and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube via Town of Penfield Television. Following tonight's proceeding, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices, Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You just need to search for Penfield TV in your app store, and it is free. So tonight, if anybody wishes to address the board on any public hearing matter, there's going to be an opportunity to do that. We have different ways. One way is if you're here in person and you want to talk, we'll call you up and ask for your name and address, and then you'll be able to speak about the application. That's one way. Another way is for folks not here, if they want to call in with a comment, they can. The phone number is 340-8771. And if I remember, I'll repeat that a couple of times for folks. And then the third method tonight is that folks can submit comments or questions through the town's website, as I mentioned before, Penfield.org. Other people have already submitted comments, either by sending letters in or emails along those lines, and we appreciate all of them. In fact, we like to mention every month that we think the town does a really good job of making sure citizens are aware of what our agenda is, what items are going to be discussed, so that if they want, they can give their thoughts and opinions on those applications. How does the town do this? Well, several ways. One is they post our agenda on the website. They also post it here at the town hall. They send postcards to anybody that lives within a certain number of feet of the application. You get a postcard. We probably all have had them. Hey, this is being heard, and here's a question or a phone number to call if you have any questions about it. The town also -- there you go. There's one right there. Okay, great. The town also makes applicants put the sign up on their property. Looks like a for-sale sign, but not quite. Same sort of size. People driving by can see, oh, something must be going on there. Let me call and figure it out what happens. So absolutely, we encourage people to speak about applicants, and we find that it helps us do our job, the more information that we have, most of the time, I guess I'd say. So as I said, tonight's meeting, we're going to start with our work session. Typically, we cover any tabled items. There is one, but that's going to be put off till next month, or we may approve minutes, which we typically do from the prior meeting, but that's going to be put off till next month. So we do have an item to speak about, I think, in work session. But after the work session is done, we're going to go right into tonight's new matters, have the public hearing. We'll call the applicant up, probably, I guess, this table. Folks usually go that way, and give us name and address. And then usually what we do is the board member who has been assigned his lead on a particular application will walk the applicant through the process. Applicants, and today is no exception, usually submit pretty thorough and detailed written applications with maps and items from neighbors perhaps, or an explanation of what they want to do. We've all looked at them. They're very thorough. So we just find it works better when we walk the applicant through the process, and we're glad to do it. Now, that doesn't mean people aren't going to be able to say anything. Say what you like, what you need to, in order to support your application. But again, don't be surprised if you start getting some questions right away from the board members. Once the process is done, we'll invite anyone to speak about it, as I said before, or recite the comments that we've received, and then we'll get into the deliberation. I think that about covers it. So all that having been said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. So as I said earlier, the approval of the minutes from September, that'll be carried over to our next meeting. And the tabled application, it's been requested by the applicant to put that off till next meeting as well.
Yes.
So let's do that. So I guess I'd make a motion to table that based upon the applicant's request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we have one item to discuss that work session. Andy, do you want to give us a little preview on that?
Sure. 3408 Atlantic Avenue, you may recall, came back a few months ago requesting a variance to allow a 12-foot-tall fence, whereas 6-foot is the maximum allowed by code. The board denied that request, and the applicants are interested in reapplying with an amended height, I guess, of 10 feet. So the question before the board tonight is, can they reapply? Well, let me start over. The town code limits reaplications to a time period of one year. You cannot reapply prior to one year. The exception is if the board feels that there's new information, or the application is significantly changed, they can allow the applicant to reapply sooner than that. So that's a question before the board tonight. Can the applicants reapply without having to wait a year from the date of the denial?
And the applicants aren't here, right?
No, they weren't able to make it tonight.
Okay. But they pretty much conveyed to you the information that you just relayed about this. And when I first learned of this request, I asked Andy if he could do some quick research about instances like this in the past that this board has considered, so we can say, hey, did we grant it previously, and if so, why or how? And he's given me three instances of the -- thank you, by the way, for doing this. And I think you put it on the --
The Google Drive.
Yeah, it was on --
Drive.
We got an email, too.
Yeah. So we -- it looks like in each instance that you cited, we did allow the person to come back, which, by the way, doesn't mean their application is granted. It just means they're coming in asking for similar relief like they did the first time. So the first one I cite, located at 2142 Penfield Road, we allowed them to come back under the circumstances there that are in the memo. McDonald's at 2191 Penfield Road, which is 250 and 441. They came in with a bunch of signs, and then they reduced it. And then Chipotle on Empire Boulevard, same sort of thing. They came in with a bunch of signs. A lot of it was denied, and then they reduced their request. In each instance, we did allow them to come back, even though a year hadn't passed. So, you know, given the fact that they have reduced their variance requests in a significant manner, I guess, relative to these other three. But more important to me is the issue that they are going to be producing a survey, which they hadn't had before. Now, whether or not this board will grant a 4-foot height variance as opposed to a 6-foot, I don't know, but we're not talking about that tonight. We're just -- can we -- will we give them permission to come in even though a year hasn't passed? How long has it been? Five months? Six months?
July, I think.
It was July, yeah.
The ultimate denial.
The ultimate denial.
But they started several months prior to that, I think.
Oh, yeah. The initial one was like, I want to see April is when they started.
Yeah, probably a year from our decision.
It's the denial, right?
Right. So anyone have any more questions about -- or any questions about the facts there or what they're asking for?
I just have one, just clarification.
Yeah.
When we deny something, and it's denied without prejudice, right? That is where we've granted them the opportunity to waive. We've automatically waived the one-year stay, if that's --
Right.
In those three examples, was that how they were denied, or were they denied in the same way that the fence was?
I don't think any of these we actually formally said without prejudice, but we may have said something like, well, you know, you're not that far off. Maybe go back to the drawing board and, you know, save them 75 bucks, too, or whatever the filing fee is. So in any event, just for moving this matter along, I'll make a motion to allow them to reapply, even though a year hasn't passed.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion to allow it with a second. Any further discussion?
And it has to be unanimous, right?
I think it does.
I'm sorry, what was the question? It has to be unanimous. I do believe so, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah. So I will put forward that I don't agree to have them reapply before the year is up.
Yeah, that's called a vote, George. I'm just saying.
I'm just letting you know that, you know, once the unanimous thing came up, I thought I should be very clear on that, so.
I appreciate that. I'm busting your --
No, no, I know.
A little bit, but that's good. All right. But anyway, my motion stands. So any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay.
Two.
Oh, you, which one? Okay, you got that recorded? All right. Very good.
So what does that mean?
No, he's second.
It means they can't reapply.
Yeah, he's second.
They have to wait a year.
Yep.
Okay.
And to move it along, yes. Okay. All right. So thank you for that. We will now move on into the public hearing section, and let's start with application number one for tonight, please.
Joseph DeSalvo, 1408 Shucraft Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code and taller than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code at 1408 Shucraft Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Joseph DeSalvo and is owned R-1-20, SBL This is application number 24Z-0052.
Okay. May we have your names and addresses just for the record, please?
My name is Anna Lamb.
Craig Lamb.
And I am -- that's my brother, and he's my next-door neighbor.
We're 1412 Shucraft Road.
Okay.
And he's at senior night for my niece, so we got proxy tonight.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thorough application, so there's a lot of information in there. I guess a few things I want to touch on in terms of the size. It looks like from the application, everything's kind of laid out. This is what we have. This is what we need the space for, and that's how we determined the size, and that's why we needed to make it a little bit larger. That sound -- that's pretty accurate in terms of, you know, we worked with the design and decided, you know, trying to make it as small as possible, but still, this is what is needed.
Right.
Okay. And then for the height requirements, it looks like the size of the overhead doors that are 10-foot doors are dictating, in a sense, the height of the roof pitch, because you still need to build a pitch to the roof for snow load and things like that. And so since there's large equipment that has to get in through there, that's kind of setting the standard for you need to be higher than 20-foot, which is allowed by code.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay. In terms of the exterior, couldn't tell from the drawings, similar colors to the neighborhood, the house, in a sense, you know, it'll complement that and won't be, you know, bright red, I guess, in a sense, or a barn, or maybe it will be a barn.
Trying to get a text to the background of like, it's a brownish.
Yeah, it's a brownish. Between my house and his house, we're both brown, so.
Yeah, so it'll be similar to what's out there. It won't stick out in the same way. Okay. How about any kind of exterior illumination, lights, things like that?
They'll have lights on there, but they will not be on, because they'll be shining in my house, and then he'll --
So more for the doorways?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think, in terms of the use, wanted to make sure, point out, too, that's not for a business use, not for, you know, commercial-type use, okay? And I think that's all I have in terms of questions and comments.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right. I don't see any call-in folks. I don't see any electronics submissions, so I'll ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this. All right. Let's move to the consideration of the environmental first.
Okay. I'm going to move this to type-two action, requiring no further review for seeker.
Second.
All right. We have a seeker motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits now?
On the merits, I'm going to move to approve the two requests. Based on the application, no undesirable change was identified that's going to be produced from this. They're going to, you know, try to match the, you know, colors and, you know, character of it to what the houses are right there in the area, so it's not going to stick out. It's -- my math says it's only about 11% larger than what's allowed, so it's not very substantial in terms of size. And the additional 7-foot for the accessory structure won't be any larger than the houses that are there as well already. Didn't find any adverse impacts to the environment, and was it self-created? I guess that most applications that come here are self-created, but at the same time, it's the sizes they needed based on their storage requirements for that area. So I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Application number two.
Matthew and Deborah Sharp, 169 Stony Point Trail, Webster, New York, 14580, request an appeal of a decision by the Penfield Historic Preservation Board under Section 250-6.2-J3 of the code, denying a request for a certificate of appropriateness for the property located at 2152 Five Mile Line Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Stony Point Real Estate Group, LLC, and is owned R-1-15, SBL number 139.10-2-80. This is application number 24Z-0053.
Okay. May we have your names and address, please?
Deborah Sharp, 169 Stony Point Trail in Webster.
Matthew Sharp, 169 Stony Point Trail.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I'm just going to start this application by reciting some, what I think are facts in my head, or maybe issues. It's a -- the application itself is not one that we commonly see at all. I've been doing this for, I don't know, 25 years, probably. Long, long time. More. It only seems like more. And I don't know. I suppose we've had this before, but not very often. And it's -- so it's unusual to us, but it's obviously very important. And the first thing I want to say, usually when we have applications like this, there are things that are in dispute. One thing that is not in dispute, I believe, is that the house, as it currently sits, and I see, looks way, way better than it did before. I don't think there's any question about that. I see your neighbor already leaning and making eye contact with him, because she's nodding. She wants to say yes. And it's a lot safer, a lot cleaner, safer. I don't think that's an issue at all. It's an important fact, but I think everyone agrees on that. As Andra said about the last application, you folks have submitted a very thorough application, making your case as well. We do have, because we're reviewing a decision of another board, the historic board, we felt it was appropriate to have Shannon here so that she can -- what's your title? Are you liaison clerk to that board?
Liaison.
Okay, liaison. Shannon here so that she can give a brief presentation on, you know, what the board actually addressed, what they found. She attended the two meetings of the board. One was in May, the other one was in August. August, they actually voted to deny the request for the certificate. And we'll get into that in a minute. But my thought here, without yet getting into anything but having reviewed everything and gone through it a couple times, actually, is, including reading Shannon's memo, is that there were a lot of the items of work that the historic board actually didn't take issue with, and would have granted a certificate of appropriateness for those items had they decided, I guess, because I'm assuming they have the power to do it bit by bit. Given that fact, I don't think that we should spend a lot of time considering those particular I'm confident that Shannon's report thus, where she says, this issue, this issue, this issue, this issue, and this issue, we're all, in fact, okay, as far as the historic board goes, that I'm -- once I hear her say that, I'm going to make a motion to overrule their decision, not because they got it wrong, but because they just gave one blank denial rather than going piecemeal. So that's where I'm looking, and you've addressed all of those, as I said, very thoroughly. There are some, however, that Shannon will report. And by the way, the meeting was on video, both meetings. I watched those. There certainly were some items that they took issue with, and their resolution, to a certain extent, calls those out. And they denied the certificate for those reasons. On those issues, what I'm ultimately going to recommend is that we send this matter back to the historic board to give both the board and the applicant a chance to reexamine those issues. The first meeting, for whatever reason, you weren't able to make. The second meeting, you appeared, you know, you were on vacation or something. You appeared by phone. It's kind of a pain in the neck. It's not the same as meeting face-to-face like this here. And as I said, a lot of the stuff that you prepared for us today, you didn't present that to that board. I don't know that the opportunity was there because of your circumstances, being on the phone, and I do know that some of the board members at the meeting talked about not having the full opportunity to ask questions about it. So for those reasons, that's right now where I'm leaning. And by the way, if you go back to them, they have a November 7 meeting?
Yeah, whatever the first Thursday of the month is.
Can this get on that agenda?
Yes, there's still time.
Good. Because what would happen here, assuming my motion is granted, is that your application before us would be granted in part for those items, and then the remaining portions of your application would be tabled until our meeting in November. You go back to historic board on the 7th, and let's say they deny it. After a thorough hearing, they deny it. Well, you're back on our calendar on the 30th. So what have you lost in this sense? 30 days, but you've already made the changes to the house. So nothing's going to change in that regard, number one. And number two, you will be given an opportunity to fully vet the issues before the original board of jurisdiction, which is the historic board. Again, that's what I'm thinking. These folks have a vote, just like I do, so I'm not sure what's going to happen. But that's one of the biggest things, I guess, that I gleaned from this, all of the papers you filed, is that the communication that should have occurred largely between the board and the applicant for various reasons, and I'm not pointing any fingers, it just didn't happen. So that's number one. And I think my suggested method, at least at this point, will address that lack of communication. And everyone at least will be able to say, okay, we had full consideration. We had a full opportunity to present it to the original board of jurisdiction, the historic board, and the historic board members can say they had ample opportunity to actually question you, having seen all this stuff, too, which, again, is you've submitted a thorough application in support of your position. So that's how I'm feeling right at the moment. But having said that, and I don't know if anyone who wants to address that issue now or when I actually formally make the motion. Doesn't matter.
I think it's a good idea. And I think it's a good idea, because we really don't know what they denied at this point.
Yeah. Well, that's true, too. The resolution is a little --
So I think, at the very least, setting it back for clarification is a good idea, but I do like this idea.
I'd say the resolution's vague, but your notes that you prepared for us, it's clear. I mean, to me, it's just, it's the wrong siding material, how it's made. That's literally, that's, at least that was my takeaway, which --
Yeah, there were two things. It feels like that's the case, and also that the applicant wasn't given an opportunity to present, okay, here's where you've already provided this exception to others. So I agree with Dan that they should have that opportunity to go to that board and say, listen, you've done this before, right? So and put it back on the onus to the board that actually owns the decision.
And I do have a question maybe for you, Michael, or you, Shannon. There is also a code section that allows an applicant who has been denied to apply for a hardship.
There is. I talked to --
I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not, or if it's something you would consider. I'm not saying you have to, but it's, that's another possibility.
Yeah, I spoke to the town attorney about it, Pete Weishire, and he said that it, the way that the hardship criteria is written, doesn't really apply to this application. It doesn't mean that they can't apply for the hardship, but it doesn't necessarily apply to this specific application.
It's more economic return and that sort of thing.
Yes.
Okay, great. So let's go to Shannon and hear her -- have you seen it? Have you seen her report? Do we have a copy?
Just my personal copy that I -- oh, there you go. Andy's got it.
Oh, okay. You guys can see that, right?
I just wrote this up yesterday, so it's fresh.
But also, a copy can be sent.
You're going to get good grades for it. Don't you worry. I'm sorry.
Can a copy be sent to the applicant?
Oh, yeah. You guys should get a copy before you leave.
Yep, I will send that. Make a note. So would you like me to just kind of run through?
You just quickly run through it. I mean, we've had it in the last day or two, so I'm sure we've had a chance to look at it.
Sure. So the scope of work for this project was pretty extensive. So I broke it down into sections based on the parts of the scope of work that the historic preservation board had concerns with, and then the parts that they had no concerns with and would have approved. The way that the application came in, it was all lumped into one scope of work, which is why they did just the overall denial --
Sure.
-- rather than breaking everything up.
Okay.
So the sections of the scope of work that the preservation board had no problems with were moving the set of stairs from the front porch from the left-hand side to the front of the porch, removing the vent stack on the south-side facade, which previously used, was used for a wood-burning stove fireplace, replacing the existing vinyl windows with new vinyl windows, adding a second-story gable on the rear of the house, walkway from the front porch to the driveway, and walkway from the back porch to the driveway. So none of those were of concern to the historic preservation board, and if they were brought in a separate application, they would have been approved of all those items.
And each one of those items, in order to be undertaken, would need a certificate of appropriateness?
Yes, all of those items, because they are exterior alterations --
Okay.
-- do need certificates of appropriateness.
Pause for a minute.
Mm-hmm.
I'm prepared right now to make a motion to overturn the historic board on those particular issues. You guys haven't said much, but --
Well, overturn if they said they have no concern, so --
Right.
-- those are not in things that they were denying us on.
Well, technically, they did deny it, because they gave you a blanket denial. What we're doing here is sort of going more piecemeal. So in essence, if my motion is carried, you will have approval for those items. Okay? Do you have any objection to us doing it that way? We'll revisit the other ones. Okay.
So far.
I'll second.
So, yeah, that's my motion to approve the items, just that Shannon just put into the record. My motion would be to overturn the denial made by the historic board on those items based upon the fact, the recitation, that the board actually had no objection to those, but rather decided to issue a blanket denial rather than a piecemeal one.
Hey, Dan, do we have to do seeker, then?
Hmm, that's a good point. Yes, I think we should do seeker. Type-two action.
No reason not to.
Pardon me?
No reason not to.
Oh, yeah? Okay, good point. Good point. All right. So I'll pause that request for a minute, and then make a motion under seeker to declare this a type-two action.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for catching that. So in any event, that's my motion to overturn the decision of the historic board regarding those particular items of the scope of work. And I think we got a second from George?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Okay. Now, um, go ahead, Shannon, and give us the remaining items.
Okay, so the items that, of the scope of work that the historic preservation board did take issue with and were the basis of the denial, were removing the existing white-aluminum siding and replacing with a natural slate gray-colored vinyl siding. Um, the house will be standard horizontal siding, aside from the porch area. For the porch area, which is on the front facade of the house, um, the siding would be, is, uh, vertical boardenbatten vinyl siding. Um, let's see, and then the stairs and railings of the new set of stairs on the front porch, uh, was replaced. Also, the natural slate gray in color for the composite decking with white vinyl railings. Um, and then the next three are all relating to windows, so it was removal of one window from the north facade, alteration in size of two other windows on that same facade, removal of three windows on the south facade.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. So, um, again, just to reiterate, pending the further discussion that we have tonight, uh, at this point, my, I'm contemplating a motion to, for this board to table your application in regard to those items, pending, um, you going back to historic board and asking them, um, to, uh, specifically rule, I guess, on each one of these. It's probably the best way to do it. Uh, because again, that's, uh, we, we can only base our decision upon what they did down there. And part of it is, sure, of course.
Um, I'm not understanding, then, why we were asked to come here. If we were denied there, why would we come back here? Why weren't we just asked to go back there for those items?
Well, because, uh, this is an ide- this is my idea.
Okay.
Um, and the code allows you to come to zoning board, and, and the, uh, the next natural step for you, um, would be to come here. But having seen her memo and thinking, well, you know, maybe this isn't as big an issue, um, as we thought, from our perspective, and having looked at their both meetings and come into the conclusion that it wasn't fully vetted at that board, that it's a good idea. And frankly, if you go down there and you succeed, then you don't have to, you don't have to come back here on whenever our next meeting date is in November. So it's, it really, uh, again, I'm making the motion as much to give both the historic board and you a chance to fully vet it there, because I don't, I, I don't think it happened. For whatever reason, I don't think that there was a full vetting of these issues at the historic board. And, you know, maybe nothing will come of that. You'll go there and, blah, 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 and deny it, and you'll be back here. But, okay, you'll have a chance, again, to present the evidence you've presented to us, to them as well. And if they deny it, you'll be back here in November, and then we'll take it up on its, on the merits.
If, if you hadn't come, I'm just to clarify here, if she did not come here-
It would be dead.
It, you wouldn't have been able to go back to the historic board as it is.
Right.
So I know it seems kind of silly, the back and forth, it's a little bit-
Especially if that hardship section doesn't apply.
But it's-
Correct. That, the zoning board of appeals, and this is an appeal, um, because you were denied, um, unless you met some very strict standards, you wouldn't have been able to go back in front of the, the historical board, absent this board allowing that to occur.
Right, and I hate to, to put it this way, but because, in a sense, we're-
Just saying, Dan.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're a, a higher board than historic board, in the sense that the code allows us to review their decisions. We have the authority to send it back to them to clarify exactly what they did, or to rehear it. So that's, that's what I'm basing this on, not just kind of being deferential to them, or nice to you, or whatever. Um, it's, uh, we, we have a, may have, a difficult decision to make on this, because as I said, the place looks beautiful, but there are other factors at play here that make this a tough decision. Uh, but if you have a full opportunity to event, to vet those before the board that meets every month on historic, well, scheduled anyway, on historic preservation issues, sort of the experts in it, um, then at least we can say that everyone had that chance down there, gave it a go, and if it doesn't work, because our matter is only tabled, you'll be right back here in a month.
I have another question.
Sure.
Um, because of the denial, we were then given a violation, which, um, per, we were unable to continue any work on the interior of the property. So the property's just sitting there. So now that some parts of it have been approved, will that violation go away, that we can then continue interior work?
We don't have that jurisdiction to answer that question, so I would say, speak with these folks first thing in the morning.
Clarification, so, I just was, to be clear, the violation stops the internal work even though the historic board doesn't have any-
It, it does not.
It stopped a, it put a violation, and then the, um, other building inspector would not give us a final framing inspection, even though he did say everything looked good. He then kind of rescinded his inspection, so we have not been able to do anything else until we come here, hoping that we can at least move forward somewhat.
Okay, so that's, that's sort of, I, I understand why you then would be reluctant to this, and, as opposed to getting a decision tonight.
Correct.
I get that.
The outside is, we could come back to that, but we-
Yeah.
-forward with the interior of the property.
So can, can we get an answer to these folks, like, early tomorrow, that if, if, if it's a miscommunication, uh, and they are indeed allowed to continue interior work because the historic board, I'm not gonna say has no jurisdiction about the interior-
They don't.
They, they did say that in the meeting.
Well, it's, it's if the interior work affects the exterior.
Yeah, I think the, I think the hold was because they framed out the windows. I, if I have to go back and read the detail, but I believe that's the reason that, that he rescinded that approval.
So the historic preservation board doesn't have anything, any jurisdiction over interior of a property.
Right.
Obviously, there's things on the interior that affect the exterior.
Right.
So those are the only things we can look at, such as windows. Um, as far as the violation notice, it doesn't stop you from doing interior work. Um, it, it's basically just a notice of violation that you didn't receive a certificate of appropriateness for the work that was completed on the exterior. So basically, it's just in place while we're kind of figuring all of these details out. So right now, we're holding off on the violation and going to court and things like that, until all of this is resolved.
And, but the violation impacts work on the inside, because-
They can't get their framing inspection.
And their framing inspection, we can't hang drywall if windows are in-
So the violation doesn't necessarily stop inspections. I am not the inspector doing those. Um, my department head, Alan Reitz, is doing it. He's out of town until Tuesday, so I'm not sure what that communication was. I'm happy to check with him until, as soon as he gets back, so that we can clarify that.
It's in the paperwork, the, the violation we were given?
Yeah, but it sounds like the violation you were given isn't, doesn't clearly address it. What, what I'd suggest is if you have specific interior work you want to do, which I'm sure you do, that you maybe try to get that to Shannon tomorrow. So maybe there's some you can do. Maybe there's some, because it affects the exterior, you can't. Um, which, by the way, in my opinion, would be totally legitimate, because you were denied a certificate of appropriateness. So you, you shouldn't be continuing any work on an item that the board has denied you. You just shouldn't, whether it's interior that affects exterior or whether it's exterior. Um, so that's what I'd suggest to you. Get a list of stuff you want to do and get it to them, and say, does this violation notice prevent us from doing this work? And get specific answers from them, so you know, so there's no lack of clarity anymore. That's one of the reasons we're here. You know, looking through all your papers about so-and-so didn't do this, we never heard that. It's, it's poor communication. By the way, um, I, I, I would, as, as somebody that's been doing this for a long time on this board, uh, and I, and I see your paperwork, and a lot of the paperwork is, and I believe what you say, nobody told us this was a historic district. And you recite that several times in your paperwork. From my perspective, that doesn't help you very much, that argument. It's just something to bear in mind if you go before the historic board again. And the reason I say that is because, at the end of the day, the party responsible for knowing that is the owner. That's you guys. Now, I get it, where you're coming from. The only reason I'm raising this is not to blame anybody, but it's to let you know that the more you talk about that, I don't, I don't think that strengthens your case. Talk about the, the beautiful materials that you used, and the condition of the house as it was, and the condition of the house as is. Go through the code sections, and what's the purpose of a historic district? One of them, you know, is it better, I wrote down a note, is it better for the town of Penfield and the historic district to have a historic house falling apart and being a dangerous condition, or is it better for the town and the district to have a house that looks the way you have it? I think that's a real, that's a better argument for you to make than, you know, nobody told us.
Part of the reason that that was stated so many times was because in the meeting, that was up, that was a huge part of the historic board's discussion as to how come they didn't know, and where, you know, it's supposed to be stated in the deed, so I needed to prove that, that it isn't stated anywhere.
All right, fair enough. If somebody, somebody raised it, it's fair for you to respond.
In other towns, it is.
Yeah, yeah. And it's on file with the Monroe County Clerk, too, which-
I don't know where.
-there's a billion files, uh, in the Monroe County Clerk's office, but the, the reason they're filed there is so that the world is put on notice as to what's recorded there. I, again, I don't, I don't want to hash it out with you, and also the, you know, um, I think you needed, you need to go in there, and I know it's not easy, but you need to go in there before that board and, and make your case. I don't think that happened, and I think that was probably one of the reasons that it was denied. Maybe not on paper, but viscerally, when a person votes. Um, so, again, that's, that's ultimately the motion I'm gonna make on the remaining, remaining items, but I'll certainly give you a chance, if you like, to address the merits of your argument, or you can just withhold that argument until, uh, if you have to come back, if, if the board denies you. You'll be back here. Up to you.
I could certainly, um, argue the merits of our, uh, application, but if it's not going, if you're all going to vote, that it's going to go back-
Right. I mean, that's, that's, again, it may be where it's headed, and I don't, uh, I don't want to cut you off or cut you short. Um, I just think it's, it's best for all parties, uh, that's my opinion, that we do it in the manner that I've suggested.
My only other question is the clarification of moving forward. If Alan doesn't have a direct answer for us on this, about moving forward with the interior work, then-
Then, 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 then I, if he doesn't give you a direct answer, which to me is, you give him 10 items you want to do. Yes, you can do it. Yes, yes, no, no, yes, yes, yes. If he doesn't give you a direct answer, then call his boss. And I'm sorry to do that, but that's how things work. You ask if he doesn't give you a direct answer. Now, if he gives you an answer you don't like, that might be direct, but you just don't like it. That's different. Um, and again, you'll be, you'll be back here in our, uh, at our November meeting, to be able to do that. So, uh, just another example, I think, of, of, uh, we, everybody could have done better communicating here. So, all right. But again, so you're gonna, you're gonna hold off on the rest of the application of those items?
Well, I really don't want to.
Well-
But that's-
No, go, go ahead, then. I, I-
I mean, I, I want to say why all of these things are the way they are. It says in, you know, the vinyl, the vinyl siding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's clear in the application that it is within what is appropriate for the area. Um, I can't believe that that would even be up as a question, um, when it's, within the last few months, um, it was, vinyl siding was approved on other properties in that same area, um, almost the exact same color as well. Um, I can explain why the vinyl siding is vertical on the front of the house, because that's more of a structural issue. It wouldn't have matched. The, the house was so out of square, that putting the vertical siding all the way around, that wouldn't have matched. It wouldn't have met up, so you had to do something different there.
Otherwise, the corners-
Right.
The porch was so out of level. If we carried the siding around, and you met the other corner, it was about three inches off. So if you just carry the, the siding through to the right side of the staircase there and stopped it, you can hide the fact that the porch is quite out of level. And then you just put the vertical siding in there, and you don't have to carry the line around. That's the reasoning for it.
That's why the, the windows were taken out, to make wall space in the house, just to have a wall to hang a coat hook or put a TV or something. That's why they were eliminated.
Upstairs was a bedroom. We're gonna put the bed against that wall.
I was about to put the bed. Those are just simple reasons.
Were, were these presented to the historic board?
There wasn't even an opportunity, especially in the last meeting, when we were on Zoom. No questions were even asked, really. Very few questions were asked.
And that's, that's Dan's point with all of this.
I think that's what came across to us, too, is like, it's, they need to hear you, and it doesn't sound like it was heard thoroughly.
It didn't sound like they wanted to hear us in that meeting.
No, well, um, I think, having listened to them, uh, that's not an unreasonable interpretation. However, I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm just saying it's not unreasonable. However, they also were struggling with the fact that in between May and August, the work was completed.
Well, yeah, we were unaware that we were supposed to stop.
Again, you have an application for a certificate of appropriateness in May, the matter gets tabled, so you clearly haven't been granted a certificate.
And then it goes down to communication of-
Exactly.
Not understand, not, us not understanding the process-
I get it.
-and not being-
I, I get it. That's why I said before, even though I was probably pointing my finger, I didn't mean to point my finger. So that's, that is, uh, I guess it's a fair summary of why I think it would be better for everybody, and people may disagree, but it would be better for everybody to make the, you're just making a lot of good points. Make those before the board that deals with historic district issues every month. And if they deny you, um, then you're back here in November, uh, for us to consider those issues again. So again, I don't want to cut you off. If you want to continue, go right ahead.
Um, the garage is not also listed on here. Um, would like to tear down the garage that is collapsing in the back?
Yeah, actually, I saw that, and I had a, a note to ask folks. It's, so if this request, uh, according to your, your letter of intent, allowed to tear down the collapsing garage, install a concrete front and rear sidewalk, and an air conditioner on the side of the house, that's what you're talking about? So, uh, if these requests weren't handled originally, weren't, weren't in front of the historic board, because they weren't made, um, can they be put on the agenda for the 9th, hopefully?
They were, they were all, all things were discussed. They were discussed with Alan and Shannon, and, and Shannon was the one that was doing the application for us.
Okay, all right.
Because that's just what we were told.
Well, you, so perhaps you've learned a little since May, and, um, you need to take this issue up yourselves, cover it in a way that you're comfortable with. If you want to run it by people, that's okay. But at the end of the day, your names are on the application.
Yeah, and we, that is absolutely something we did not know. It's a huge education-
Get it.
-for us, um-
Okay.
-to not put so much-
That's why I asked the question. And your note here, you got additional items you want to do. Can this be on the agenda? I heard a yes. So, follow up with that. How do we make sure that these items, these new items, will be considered by the board? Considered by the board. Do we have to send a letter? Do we have to fill out an application? Um, so, yeah, there's, there's, there's work to be done on everybody's part. There's no denying that. Okay. All right? Again, continue if you like. I-
If, if she wants to put that back up there, but if it's not gonna make a difference, I don't want to waste all your time. I don't-
Well, I, I don't, I can't say that it's gonna make a difference. I can tell you from looking at both meetings, um, again, the fact that the work had been completed, it's a natural human reaction to say, well, jeez, my vote is meaningless at this point, because the work is done. So, I'm being asked- So I'm being asked to issue a certificate of appropriateness after the fact, which, by the way, happens once in a while to this board. We get an application for an area variance, for a shed that's already built. And if we deny the shed, it's got to be moved, which isn't cheap, is a pain in the neck, and ticks people off. And yet, what did this board do? This board just took the application. Board had nothing to do with the building of the shed. Now, sometimes people aren't aware. Again, I believe you, that you weren't aware. But, you know, the board needs, to me, an opportunity to get to the real issues here, and that's why I think on the seventh, just make sure, have a conversation. Don't, nobody has to be, I'm not looking for people to be best friends here, but you need to communicate, to put yourself in best position, to make your best case, and have them approve it. And if it doesn't happen, you know you've done your best, you've put your best arguments here, like the good ones you've made tonight, and you will have another opportunity to come back to this board if you don't succeed there.
If I could just add a couple items. If this outbuilding was not part of the application, I don't think this board has original jurisdiction to approve that anyways. I think you would need to go there first on that issue. And secondly, if there is going to be a vote taken to table, I think public comments, unless it's going to be held open for public comments if this comes back, I think there should be an opportunity for public comments.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we'll leave it open. No doubt about that. But again, I don't want to cut you off on your other points you've made here.
If Shannon could, or someone could put that back up.
Put the memo back up that she had?
When, if the Historic Board revisits this, will they also, are we asking that they revisit this point by point on that memo? Or is it a similar decision where it's...
Oh, wow.
Flat out, yes, or flat out, no?
My motion will be that they...
Revisit each section?
Each item of the scope of work, as cited in Shannon's memo, that they rule on those.
I would agree. That way, this board has the reasoning from the Historical Preservation Board as to any denials that they may make. And again, I think the application for this outbuilding should be included, so they can make a ruling on that, which, if, again, necessary, you could appeal here.
I think we'll need a separate new application for the garage demolition, because we already denied, the board already denied parts of the original application, so this would be a new separate issue, a new separate topic. So I think we need a new separate application for the garage demolition.
To be heard at a separate meeting?
No, at the same meeting. It would just be to, just to separate it from the denial, because the board hasn't even looked at the garage situation yet.
And if that is done, and the board denies it, any of the new parts, part of my motion will be that we consider those items to be part of this original application. We entertain those as an appeal in November. So we're not saying to them now, they're going to come back in December on these new items. We'll take those up in November, if they're denied. Okay.
Could we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
We, I discussed the windows, why the windows were, it's either taken out or removed. It was just a matter of what we wanted the interior of the house to be.
Okay.
That's, those are the railings, and the railings, I think that was somewhere on there. We just mimicked what was across the street. And those pictures are in the application.
Yeah, no, again, thorough application, the references to other instances where the board, somebody quoted me in...
I did.
In your papers. Good, good move.
I watched all your videos.
I always agree with myself.
You must have gotten really bored.
I was going to say, you have some time on your hands, for sure.
I understand that the first application was not, you know, we did not fill out the first application. So this application, I wanted to make sure it was as thorough as I could possibly make.
Yeah, and it was. You succeeded in that regard, referencing other instances where a board granted this or denied this. That's all good strategy.
Yep.
No doubt. And you, I suggest you do that on the seventh.
Unless you disagree.
Anything else?
I would just like, I would like to reiterate, we'd like to be moving forward with the property. I mean, it's been sitting vacant, with no work being able to be done.
Understand.
Because of the violation.
Well, we'll see. You're going to clarify that, I understand, or try to. Okay. All right. So we have somebody here that wants to speak about this. Because you may be busy in the next meeting, if it does get tabled, you're here now, I'll give you the choice, you can speak now, Ms. Richards, or you can come back in November. Or you can go to the Historic Board. Do they take public, they must take public comment.
I'll do that.
Yes.
You know my vote.
I do. Why don't you come up and sit up here, and when I call for vote, raise your hand.
I've lived in my house 31 years, and been watching this house for the last 15 years, and I approve this property.
Yeah, and you sent in a letter, too? So, yeah, hopefully you're available on the seventh. Go to the Historic Board. I think they did have your letter, but, you know, letters are good, but in-person standing up and talking, to me, is more effective.
Thank you.
So, you know, you're welcome. You're welcome. And then, if you want, if we are back here in November, you're more than welcome to come back there as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So we'll hold off on that, we'll leave the hearing. So let me make a motion then. I'm going to make a motion regarding the other aspects of the application, that we table those items until our November meeting, that we remand the matter to the Historic Board for its November 7th meeting, for the applicant to come in, perhaps file more paperwork prior to the seventh, and then be able to come in and address each of these matters, and then for the board, the Historic Board, to rule separately on each one of them. If granted, then the application that would be tabled will just come off our agenda, because they'll have their things. If any of them, the items, including the new items, are denied, we will take those up as an appeal, without any further filing fee or anything like that by the applicant. We'll take those up at our November meeting.
Second.
Did I cover everything?
I think so.
Are you going to leave the comments open, or?
Yes. Leave the comments open. Yep, absolutely. All right, so I've made a motion, second half. The first one was to approve, we've done that. Second one is to table the remaining items as per the reasons I've stated. And we got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Well, don't take this the wrong way, but I hope I don't see you at our November meeting. But if it happens, we'll be here. And by the way, feel free to submit anything else. If they don't, you're not limited to what's here.
That's everything I have.
Oh, I figured, but you never know. More, you know, more neighbors, too, should feel free to submit more thoughts as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
I'm going to sneak out.
See you, bye.
Well, my hope is fantastic.
Well, great.
Third.
Yeah, get there.
That's right.
Okay, let's go to the next application, please.
R. Scott Rasmussen, 47 Aspen Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a private athletic recreational court with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F14 of the code at 47 Aspen Drive. The property is currently formally owned by Robert Scott and Valerie Rasmussen, and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 123.12-1-17. This is application number 24Z-0054.
Hello, folks. If we can have your names... How am I? I'm doing all right.
Good.
You know, thank you for asking. Names and address for the record, please.
Valerie Rasmussen, 47 Aspen Drive.
And my name is Scott Rasmussen, and I'd like to, you know, since you like neighbors so much, introduce my neighbor to the South, Jim Froome, who is not feeling well, came to give us a support, so thanks.
Well, thank you. Okay.
Just for the record, he's the pickleball enthusiast amongst us.
He's the reason why we're all here.
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, thanks for submitting the application. Had a chance to go over it, but essentially, you currently have, I don't want to use the word dilapidated, but an older tennis court in your backyard. It was there when you acquired the home, and it's sort of in repair mode, and you're just going with the trend and wanting to convert that from a tennis court to a pickleball court.
Just following the lead of the town of Penfield, that's all we're doing here.
That's all you're doing.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. It was here when we bought it. It was a really cool thought when we bought the property. Sadly, our kids never took to it, and they're all grown and out of the house now. And you're right, we've had it repainted a couple times, it's really expensive, and the paint didn't stick last time, so I got to do something about it. And I don't really want to pay all the money to have it completely resurfaced and repainted for a sport that we don't really play that much. But Jim's been getting us into pickleball. And so we want to convert it, which is cutting out pretty much, you know, most, I've got the square footage, of how much asphalt we're pulling out. But it's going to be converted from the existing full-size tennis court, which runs east to west. Well, we'd like to prefer, if we could, and that's why the area variance is here, to have it run north-south, mostly because the east and west orientation blinds you in the afternoon, so you really can't play when you want to play. So it was actually Jim's idea to have it run north-south, because he is our neighbor to the south. So I know there's a 10-foot buffer, I guess is probably the best way I describe it, between property lines that you're not supposed to impede. But with this plan, it does go into that by about a foot or something, I think.
Two feet, right?
I think we're asking for two feet, but it's a little about a foot is what, actually, what it is. So Andy's idea to do it, I like it. If you guys would be kind enough to approve it, then we have an asphalt company that's ready to go, pending your approval.
So, a couple questions, just with the orientation, makes a lot of sense. If you're going to redo it, redo it the right way. Why can't you just shift it? I know we're talking about, you know, a foot, which it's two feet is what the variance request is for. Should it be only one foot, the request?
I think it was Andy's idea, just in case it comes in, just to make sure that we're given a little leeway, a little safe on it.
Yeah, given the information we had with the survey map and taking points of reference, I was comfortable going with the two-foot to ensure that that was accurate.
Not going to be a problem.
And there's no way to just slide it two feet inward? What's, why can't you just slide it two feet?
Towards that way, where there's a little...
If you're having to dig everything up and...
Oh, yeah, I mean, actually, we've talked about that. We could move it down a little bit, which would make it a little less of an issue, which means I probably wouldn't even need to be here. But it's really more of the balance of the yard, because one of the things that is in the application, too, is eventually, probably not for a while, I would like to, actually, it's funny the way Jim made that, because it's actually looking from his property out towards ours, is I would like to put a concrete pad and put a pavilion back there, and to do that, it would be better on the left side versus if the court was more...
So it takes up less of the yard?
Yeah, just sort of the balance of the yard, if you will.
And then you, of course, mentioned Jim in your application, he's here, under the weather, and still made it all the way here.
Is that true?
And so he certainly has your support. Anybody else in the area not aware, the board's not aware of any complaints from the current tennis court, from a noise or anything else?
Our immediate next-door neighbors, the Buckpits, have write-off fees, so they just, they go over and use the court.
Use it all the time.
They want the three boys.
Just don't invite John McEnroe over to play.
He just he even...
Do you know who John McEnroe is?
Oh, I don't.
I don't think he does.
Can you imagine that? Jeez.
He doesn't even play anymore.
He does commercials down, he yells in the commercials.
He was classic for broken jackets.
He sure was.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Early 80s or so.
Goodness gracious.
Andrea, I guess he is that. Oh, no. Okay, so I don't have any other questions.
All right, any other questions from the board?
No, not for me.
I don't see any phone calls, shocker there, or any public participation emails on this, so I'll invite anyone in the audience.
Come on, Jim. Thumbs up.
If you'd like to speak, come on up.
I don't know if I should talk about making trouble.
Oh, boy.
Sit back down, then.
When he was talking about doing it, he was going to do it east-west, and you can't play in the afternoon, because the sun's right there. And so when we talked about turning it around on the northern edge, the lawn drops off like this, so I said, because he's actually got to add, I think, 10 or 12 feet to the existing asphalt. And I said, bring it up to my house. I'm your neighbor, I don't care about variances, and I have two rolls of trees, I have an acre and a half, so I just don't care.
He was like, I'll just give you four feet. I'm like, I think of area variance as easier, very easily.
And if he does, I don't know if you can see it on the map, if he were to work, move it, if he moves it over to the west a little bit, our property lines aren't parallel, so if he moved it all the way over the west or a little bit, you know, he's probably not even needing the variance. So I think where they want to put it, a foot or two, I think I was there when you came out and measured, wasn't I?
Yep.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's all.
So you're supportive.
Two thumbs up.
He's more than supportive. He's going to come over to the spring and help me paint it.
Okay, thank you for being here and for your comments. There's no one else in the audience. So let's move to the consideration, starting with Seeker.
We'll do Seeker. My laptop died, so I'm pretty sure it's a Type 2. Yeah, okay. I make a motion on Seeker that this is a Type 2, requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay, we're going to give that one to George, the second. And any further discussion on the Seeker? All those in favor? Aye. Now on the merits.
All right, I move to approve the request. You know, thinking through the considerations, will this create an undesirable change or detriment to the nearby properties? No, it's replacing a current tennis court. The board is not aware of any complaints. There's the support of the neighbor, and there's no other neighbors that have provided any disagreement with the request. Could the benefit be sought by another method? Sure, but it would create some hardship with really limiting the rest of the yard use. And again, with point number three, the request, I would deem, is not substantial. It's less than a 20% variance request. The most impacted neighbor has expressed support, and if you even look at that, the tree line adds an additional kind of buffer in between the properties as well. It will not produce an adverse impact on the physical environment, again, replacing a current tennis court. And is this self-created? Yes, as nearly all of these requests are self-created. So with that, I would make the motion, again, to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated. In a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck. Good luck. Thank you again for being here.
I'm over playing pickleball, Willis.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
That was the last application for tonight, so we will stand in recess until November. Thank you all very much.